Maronic, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Ma'am Clerk, would you co-roll, please?
Sakura.
Here.
Torenzi.
Here.
O'Donnell. Deion.
Here.
Here.
Sorry. I am so sorry, Councilman.
Microphone's not on. Here.
Thank you. Deion.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Calendino.
Here. All present, and we have a quorum. We do have one item that I need to make a change in consent, approval of the agenda. We do need to add an item. I'm going to call it Item F dot one. It's an American Legion request. Mr. Maronic will be presenting that. With that exception, I'd be looking for a motion to approve consent business.
So moved. Support.
Motion by Deion, support by Sakura. Any discussion? Ma'am Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. No unfinished business or correspondence tonight. New business, first on the agenda is the Cassie Heinz Shoe 5K Run. Is anyone here tonight? If you could step up to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Ryan Swakowski, 47504 South Fork Drive, Macomb Township.
I'm Jennifer DeDell, 48783 Chelsea Court, Macomb Township.
We're the new co-chairs of the Cassie Heinz Shoe Foundation for the Glow Run. It's our 13th annual Glow Run event. We're hoping to again, do it again at Jimmy John's, same thing as last year. Reached out with the sheriff and, sorry, pleased to even talk to him about the event. We have things set up and organized. We're looking for the same thing as last year, hoping to have it go as well and successful as it has been for the past previous years.
Excellent. Chief?
Yes, Mayor, I had to forward them my concerns about just security and stuff for the event. So it sent a, an estimate for contractual services and stuff for the run.
Yep. We're all set, we're all ready to go with that.
It's Saturday, September 14th.
Yep. Thank you.
I know that was the important part, probably, to tell you.
Sorry about that. Yeah, but it'll be going on from seven to nine, and the race will start about at sundown, which is about 7:45.
Yeah, I've been every year, I think. It's a great event.
Thank you.
I really enjoy it. Chief Fullsec, are we contracting for EMS that night?
I believe they contracted my assistant chief, Randy, for the ambulance standby.
Do you need Ryan?
No, I hadn't reached out yet, so I still need to do so.
Okay, yeah. If you want an ambulance there.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other concerns either of our chiefs?
No concern, Mayor. It's always has, always has been a good run.
Excellent. So we would be looking for a motion to approve the Cassie Heinz Shoe Cancer Foundation 13th Annual Glow Run at Jimmy John's, subject to finalizing the details with both Chief Fullsec and Chief Kaluzny.
So moved.
Sakura.
Motion by Robinson, support by Torenzi. Any discussion from council? Ma'am Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Oh, we did, didn't we? You're very welcome. Our city attorney just alerted me that we missed public comments. Normally, that comes before we get into the agenda. So if there's anyone from the public tonight that would like to address council for any item on the agenda, feel free to step up to the podium. All residents will be allotted three minutes.
Push the button.
Yes, my name is Paul Cons, 45814 Hecker Drive, Utica. And I have two, two things I wanted to bring up that's on the agenda. The first is the water grant that we, that you're having to sign on, of $512,000, a grant. Five hundred, $5,1200, $500. Congratulations on everybody that was involved in that grant. The second thing is the marijuana changes. I originally was, being so old, I was against all the marijuana stuff, but it's business, it's competition. The first was the two marijuana sales just south of Hall Road. And I see that they're making changes to the, the, the rules and regulations and opening up and addressing the two that are going to be over in Park Avenue, which I'm in favor of. It's more business, it's more dollars to the city, and it brings more people out to the Utica area. It is a new business across the board. My question is, it was good that we had two south of Van Dyke, and it's good we have two over in the park, on Park Avenue. We have two, I believe, for competition, which is good. Competition is always good. I noticed that we're limiting the growth area to only one. And I just question why it's limited only to one. I understand that the one we had, that there was some complaints about the smell and stuff, and I don't know if they've taken care of that or not. But I just want to bring up that, from a competition standpoint, I think there should be two. The license should be available for two of them, two growing areas. And I know those are industrial areas, not in, close to the city and everything. So that's all I have to offer, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cons.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address council tonight for any item on the agenda? Just to make everyone aware, there is another portion in the meeting towards the end where you can have three minutes to speak on any item of your choice. I'll try to not skip over that when we get to that point. Next on the agenda is the Parkinson's Hero Walk. Is there anyone here, a petitioner? If you could just step to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Katie Alexander, and I'm with the Michigan Parkinson Foundation, and our address is 30400 Telegraph Road in Bingham Farms. I'm new there, I've only been there two months, so I don't really know the address off the top of my head. But we are looking to repeat our Hero Walk that we did last year at Jimmy John's Field, and we're requesting a part of the road to be closed so that we can get our walkers out of the gate. We have a lot of guests that are in wheelchairs, and so where the sidewalk is, there's some lampposts there, and they can't get around when everybody's trying to exit. So we do need that support from the City of Utica to help close that part of the road so they can come out of the gate and get to the trail.
Chief? Have you been in contact with?
Not yet.
The organizers?
Oh, I, yes, Mayor, I have, I have sent, I'd sent the estimate to the one contact I had.
Okay.
But I get your information and forward it to you as well.
That'd be great, because we, like I said, we just transitioned, so you might have sent it to her email.
Okay.
Chief Fullsec, I'm guessing the same thing?
Yep. You have to contract us for an ambulance?
That'd be great.
So what are your hours for the road?
Nine o'clock is registration, and it ends about one o'clock. In the morning, it's on September 14th. It's the same day as the Cassie Heinz Run, it's just earlier in the day.
Oh, it says 23rd.
Yeah, and the AIS form, it says September 23rd, but that's.
Oh, my apologies.
That's okay. Yeah, it's gonna be a busy day in downtown Utica.
Sure is.
So we'd be looking for a motion to approve the Parkinson's Hero Walk on September 14th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., subject to proper arrangements being made with our Utica Police and Utica Fire.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Torenzi, support by Sakura. Any discussion from council?
Ma'am?
Yeah?
When you have opportunity to gather in the morning, would you maybe help us out by advising some of your participants to maybe visit our restaurants in the downtown district, make sure maybe they can patronize them?
Sure.
Because although, you know, we have our police services and they're doing a great job, and we don't want the persons to be limited at that bridge, right? Let's push them a little further east down Auburn so they can visit some of our nice restaurants. And we had a run two weeks ago, and it was great. I mean, the people showed up, and the restaurants were packed. So if, you know, if you could help us, help you type thing. With, you know, our restaurants could really benefit from some activity in the downtown district after such events, so.
We definitely can do that. It's, I just want you to let, know too, there's about 800 people that come, and some of them, because they do have Parkinson's, it's a lot, it's a long day for them from nine to one. So I'm, please don't anticipate that all 800 people are gonna come downtown. It's, it's really hard enough for them to even go a half a mile, and we're trying to support them in that journey, because mobility is a huge issue with that disease.
Understood, so thank you for that, obviously.
Any further discussion? Ma'am Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Next on the item is the Utica High School Homecoming Parade. Can you give us your name, and you could just tell us you're from Utica High.
My name's Sarai Gassan, I'm from Utica High, and we are looking to approve and like, you know, authorize the homecoming parade on October 4th, 2024, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. We need the road closures of Cass and Auburn Road. And we're just looking to like, you know, do the homecoming parade again this year.
Excellent. Chief, any concerns there? I know it's probably, is this the exact same footprint as every year?
Yeah, same, same thing.
No concerns at all, Mayor. We work real good with Shelby Township in coordinating and getting the roads all shut down and making sure it's a nice, safe event.
Excellent. Chief Fullsec, any concerns?
We're good off that. I have got volunteer for that one all the time, so.
Excellent. All right, we would be looking for a motion to approve the Utica High Homecoming Parade on October 4th with road closures from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m.
So moved. Support.
Motion by Deion, support by Robinson. Any discussion from council?
And all three, all three of us are PR chiefs. Chief, class of 8079?
Ma'am Clerk, roll call vote, please.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I thought I heard her say 24th. It is October 4th or October?
October 4th.
October 4th, thank you. I apologize. Sakura.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. We look forward to it. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Gasoline Alley Sign Request. Mr. Pro, how are you, sir?
I'm good. I, the Utica Lions and Rick from US Tire are trying to get signage out two weeks before the event so we can actually do the sponsorships and the signage for, for the breakfast and the event, total event. We're requesting to start putting it out on July 27th, which is two weeks before the event.
Same locations, pretty much, up and down Cass?
Up and down Cass, some on Hawn. Yeah, we're gonna have a few more signs, just because we want to get more signage out there for the sponsorships and stuff like that, too.
It's a little longer period, I believe, too, right? I think typically, they've only done it for a week. Is that right?
Rick says he put some out earlier than that, but before, we were always just a week. So that's what we're trying to do, two weeks, just to give a little bit more advertisement to the sponsorships and to give more people notice about the pancake and hot dog sales and stuff like that.
All right. We would be looking for a motion to approve the Utica Lions to place 2024 Gasoline Alley Car Show signs up from Saturday, July 27th, 2024, through Sunday, August 11th, 2024.
So moved.
Motion by Sakura. Support by Torenzi. Any discussion from council? Ma'am Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And just to let everyone know, one of our ideas is to give the funds, a lot of the proceeds, to the splash pad victims. So we're hoping to get a big turnout and hope we see you all there. Thank you.
Great cause. Thank you, Rob. Next on the agenda is approval to place signs for the Utica Vendor Market.
Hi, I'm Chanel, and I'm representing for 45199 Cass Ave. I just wanted to get the approval of placing basically these signs a week before the event, on July 27th, to basically advertise the vendor event. I had the first one in June, and that did really, really well. We had a lot of really good turnout for that. So I wouldn't mind if I can try to get more advertisement for it, just to attract more people, and kind of hopefully that works.
This is not a charity event, right?
No, no, this is just a vendor event.
Typically, we don't grant these type of requests for for-profit events. It kind of sets precedent where, you know, it becomes almost impossible to say. If we say yes to one for-profit entity, it just opens the door where, you know, every business, everyone trying to, you know, running a for-profit entity is gonna be coming here and asking us for signs. So I'm a little concerned about it. I'm trying to decipher here, it looks like you want to put 11 signs up, right?
Or as many as you guys would allow, just a few. We had really good foot traffic for the last one. I mean, a lot of people were interested, a lot of people throughout the city were all walkers, and they liked it a lot. I got a lot of good feedback from it, and it seemed like it brought a lot of money, not just for myself, but for the vendors. And then it, it was something to do for the city, which I noticed was really nice. So there was a lot of families, a lot of kids out. So I just want to see if there's a way to basically somewhat advertise it more with the okay, if you're guys is okay.
The, the one location I'm noticing is not in Utica, Shelby Road and 21 Mile Road. That's actually in Shelby Township.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, there's also a number five corner of Van Dyke 21 as well.
Yep. That's Shelby as well. Well, can we get a motion on the floor and then open it up for deliberation? A motion to either approve or deny the request?
Mr. Mayor, I'm making a motion to approve the request. Real quick, how many signs in total?
Eleven.
Eleven signs, two of them not.
Well, two of them are not, so nine.
And they're, I don't have the page. Is there a map location?
No.
So we can discuss it, I'll second the motion.
Motion by Deion, support by Sakura, and we're open for deliberation.
I do share Mayor Gassan's concern about a for-profit organization. I like the traffic you brought in, that sort of thing, but you are really doing it for yourself, and you're doing it for vendors to make money. It's not as if, like, the Lions do it, they do it for charity, and everything they make winds up going for charity. This isn't, it's not a charity event. So if somebody else came in and says, I want to do this, and I'm the one that's gonna benefit from it, again, it's the precedent issue. It's very hard to then tell somebody else no when we said yes to somebody else for the same exact thing.
I agree, I, I'm sorry, I agree with the mayor, I'm with Councilwoman Sakura. Because it's a for-profit event, I hesitate to do that, because we are setting precedents.
And may I ask a question? So in, in doing this, do you actually draw revenue from this yourself?
Not really much at all. It's really more for the vendors. I don't really make much on it, because I vend myself, and that's kind of how I make my income. Again, this is only gonna be the second one. I would like it to become more consistent, to that way eventually I could do things with organizations, but I'm not established yet in order to do those things necessarily. So I'm just kind of trying to build familiar, or familiarity with the, the area and the people, and then eventually be able to grow it to something bigger.
So how often would you be anticipating doing this?
Well, as of right now, it's only been one a month, but eventually, I mean, we're gonna go through the process to see what we need to do with just everything in registration and with you guys, to make sure everything's all done properly, to where it could become more consistent.
So you'd be asking for nine signs in the city every month?
No, no, no. I'm just trying to see where, I guess, would be okay with you guys to just place any kinds of signs, because last time I just got to place them in front of the building, and I use a lot of social media. So I just, I didn't know if there's anywhere at all that I could place any type of signage or anything, or if you guys had some kind of, I guess, preferred place for stuff like that. And not all nine signs have to go up, I just, I don't know, I'm just trying.
How long would you want them to be up?
Only for that week of the event.
But you said you want to have future events, so this is gonna be reoccurring, then?
It could be possibly, yes. But I probably wouldn't place as many signs right away. I just want to know, like, what I would have to basically do in order to get it functioning properly. This is my first time doing everything.
Maybe as the popularity of the event grows, you'd have to have less signage, because it would become a thing.
Exactly. Yeah, so as long as people get to know about it, then I can cut down on that. It's just, I'm trying to get more foot traffic so that people become familiar with what we're doing.
With that in mind, it might be a good idea just to approach the businesses that are these and just place it on the other side of the sidewalk. I, I know that's a pain, but you're also getting some traction for your event.
None of the, none of the places around like me, they're not really my friends right now.
Any further discussion?
Well, I, I mean, I'm inspired by the opportunity that you're taking, or chance you're taking to want to grow a little business and have something, you know, bring people to the City of Utica, but at the same time, have a lot of respect for our ordinances. And, you know, they're crafted in a manner that, that level a planning field for everyone. You know, and like the mayor said, if we, if we give a special consideration for one individual, it does set a precedence. I'm just wondering if there's other creativity that you might seek to find a way to do this without calling on the city to help boost your business.
Oh, I mean, I've been using a lot of, like, internet, social media, you know, flyers and stuff like that.
Well, like the councilman said, if maybe you could find private property, you know, somewhere adjacent, that might work in your favor, too.
Okay.
Up and down Cass, up and down Shelby Road, maybe someone on Van Dyke. You know, you can talk to the guys that have businesses on Hall Road. That might be beneficial to the point where the city might not have a necessary concern with it. And that way, you have a little more free range to do what you want.
So I wouldn't have to ask for the okay from you guys, then, for that, even if it'd be placed in front of their property on city lines?
It's my understanding, if it's on private property, you wouldn't need to.
I'd have to refuse signing, not signing.
I just want to make sure I don't.
We send our DPW out every, I'm not gonna say the day or frequency, because then people will get around. But that's a lot of city resources, you know, our residents' taxpayer money that we're using to, they could be fixing water main breaks and, you know, cleaning our parks, doing all the other hard work they do, but we have to send them out frequently to pull signs.
Gotcha.
This being an election year, our residents are gonna be visually polluted with many, many, many signs that we can't really control. Again, it's, it's the precedent, you know. I, just like Councilman Deion, I really like your idea. I actually went to your walk, or your, your vendor market. I thought it was really cool.
Thank you.
I'd like to see something like that do, you know, be more frequent in the city. I definitely think it will add to foot traffic, help our bars and restaurants.
Oh, yeah.
My only concern is, if we say yes to this, how do we say no to Deion's Barbershop? You know, I'm given half off on haircuts, and I want to put signs all, all around the city. And the line of businesses that would come to us would be long, and I don't know how we could be consistent and say no to some and yes to others.
Okay.
Just for clarification, if you put a sign in front of a business, it has to be on their property. It cannot be on the city property.
Okay.
So if you use the side, if there's a sidewalk, it can't be between the street and the sidewalk. It would have to be on the other side. Other than that, you're in violation, and the sign goes bye-bye.
And we don't want to discourage you from having these creative ideas, so it's not necessarily a no to you, but it's a yes to our ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, I have respect for our ordinance and the rules that we have in place.
Any further discussion? You should have done that in the beginning, sir. Yeah, that's okay. Ma'am Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
So on the table, we had a yes to allow.
Yes.
So I'm gonna say no.
Torenzi.
No.
O'Donnell.
No.
Deion.
No.
Ryan.
No.
Robinson.
No.
Mayor Calendino.
No, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'll be looking on social media, though, and I'll be there at your next one, too. I'll have money in my wallet this time, okay? Next on the agenda is adoption of the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance for marijuana businesses. This was in your package, you'll see the draft. This went through planning and was approved. Madam Attorney, could you give us a concise understanding of what we're doing here?
So as the gentleman stated earlier in this meeting, the council did vote to adopt more licenses in the area. This is not going to change that. This amendment only brings our zoning ordinances into accord with that. If, if this were to go down, the marijuana business ordinance would still control, and that would still be moving forward. But as a lawyer, I felt it was cleaner to make sure that both ordinances coincide with each other.
So we would be looking for a motion to adopt the proposed amendments to the Utica zoning ordinance pertaining to marijuana businesses.
Support.
Motion by Sakura.
Support.
Support by Torenzi.
I'm sorry.
Any discussion from council? Ma'am Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Department reports? I don't have much to report tonight.
Did you have F1?
Oh, that's right, American Legion, our add-on. Commander.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I, I can call him Commander, because he's actually my commander, because I'm a member of the American Legion Post.
Yes, I'm John Maronic. My address is 44084 Davis Drive, but I'm here on behalf of the American Legion to keep inconsistent with the rules and regulations of the city. We would like to put out a couple of signs for our annual picnic that we have, or joint picnic that we have with the Marine Corps League and, and the American Legion on the 3rd of August. Something similar to what the Lions Club and everything does. Not to, not to exceed three by four, and we'd like to put them out around the 22nd, and we'll take them down on the 2nd of August if we have to. And obviously, some of the places we were looking at, we may have to move them. So maybe Van Dyke and Hawn, or someplace, someplace like that, because obviously, Hawn and Cass are gonna be full with signs, with Gasoline Alley and everybody else. Everybody seems to be having everything within that two- or three-week timeframe. So we can adjust and put them, but we just want to make sure that we ask the city permission, and we have your blessing to go ahead and put them up. And I can send an email back or come and talk to the city clerk and let you know, take pictures and show you where they're at, so we don't congest anybody else's signs. So we're looking for permission to do, put a couple of signs up, if that's possible.
And this will be at the same time as the Lions have for the car show, right?
They're a week before.
No, no, we're the third, they're the 10th.
Okay.
We can adjust our signs.
You can work with them.
We need to do our signs, but we'll adjust our signs.
Yeah, because they wanted to go out, they wanted to put theirs out earlier, so they're trying to go a week earlier. So that's why I said I'd just try to move ours just a week earlier, but get ours out of the way, so obviously, you can still get their, get the Gasoline Alley advertised as well.
Yeah, I think we'd have concerns if we had two on any of the intersections for obstruction, obstructed views, or.
Right.
Any input on that, Chief?
Yeah, and ours is a nonprofit, it's a fundraiser, and all that, okay?
Uh, Mayor, yeah, I think if, you know, depending on the number of signs that it could obstruct traffic, so, but we'll, we'll definitely work with, with both entities and stuff if we have any issues.
Sure. Yeah, no, it's not a problem, Chief. Not a problem.
Are you looking at Cass more than?
No, I was looking at Van Dyke because I figured with the traffic when they shut down northbound the freeway, everybody's coming through town. So that's the other reason I'm, I'm looking at, looking at, you know, doing it. And we haven't advertised in past years. We just advertised on our sign and by word of mouth, and we're trying to do some things a little bit better and try to get, you know, more participation as well, just like everybody else. So this is something new for us as well. So, and again, I'm not trying to impede on anybody who's been here before or whatever, but just try to blend in and add. That's all.
All right. Well, we would be looking for a motion to approve the American Legion Post 351 to post signs, subject to them working with Chief Kaluzny and Utica Police to make sure we're not obstructing any views.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by O'Donnell, support by Sikora. Any discussion?
I mean, could you work it out where you're not unnecessarily, you've got four corners at an intersection. If you were opposing corners or that, might that-
Right, correct. Yeah, that's, that's-
You all get, you're going to see them, whether you get them in the morning or in the afternoon. So they're both excellent organizations, both great causes.
And, and, but again, safety's number one and, and, and we don't want nothing to happen.
On the same corner. So something to consider when you-
We're like Gumby. We're flexible.
You're, you're dating yourself.
What can I say? I'm a glutton for punishment, all right?
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Mayor Gilson and Council. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry, Major, what was the, uh, the timeframe for the event?
I'm looking at the 22nd to the second of August. The picnic's on the third.
That's what I was looking for. The third and the picnic, what time's it start?
November the 4th.
All right, I'm hungry. I'm hungry already. I'm just letting you know.
All right, department reports. Um, not much to share tonight. We've, as you're, you're hearing, we've got a lot of great events coming up in the city. Uh, also we have our Friday night music, our Weekend Unwind Series every Friday night from seven to 10. It's been very well attended. Unfortunately, two weeks we had rain, uh, kind of interfere with the fun. Uh, fingers crossed that that won't happen this week. We do have a local Utica resident, uh, with a new band called Waves appearing for the first time in Utica. And he also just released a new single. It's out on Spotify, very good band. Uh, so, uh, if you can, come out. It's completely free. And Tom, what's the tagline?
Uh, bring your, bring your cooler, your friends, or I'm sorry, bring your cooler, your lawn chair and your favorite people.
There you go. Does anyone else on the council have anything to report tonight?
I have a question. Um, to the, to Madam Clerk, what is the filing deadline for city council signatures?
July 23rd.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Deon.
In case we have new colleagues.
Last minute doesn't matter.
And next on the agenda, uh, under planning is the adoption of the proposed text amendment to Article 10 dash MXD. Uh, this also went through planning already and was approved. What this does is it just strengthens some of the language as related to, uh, used vehicle dealers, outdoor sale space, repair facilities, uh, for the sale of new or secondhand automobiles, house trailers, recreational vehicles, or rental trailers and/or automobiles. Uh, it also relates to, uh, pawn brokers, secondhand dealers, and junk dealers. Again, all the information is in your packet. This already went through planning. We'd be looking for a motion, uh, to approve the zoning ordinance.
I'll make a motion to approve the zoning ordinance.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Terrencey. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Uh, nothing from building tonight. Uh, library, Ms. Francis, uh, had to leave early today and asked to be excused from tonight's meeting. Uh, she said that she does have a report about the summer reading program and she will give it next month. Uh, it's nearing its end and she says it's been very successful. Uh, so we're anxious to hear that. Uh, Chief Willsec, report from fire.
Yes, Mayor and Council, um, before you tonight, I have three agenda items that, uh, I would like to get approved. Um, first one being the purchase of our Spencer Fire Truck with the award of the FEMA acquisition grant EMW 2022 FG 08163 for $825,000. FEMA's portion was $785,714.28. Utica's 5% match is $39,285.72. The cost of the engine was a stock number 1636 is $848,835. During the September meeting in 2023, council approved the need for additional funds in the amount of $24,000. This was needed to do the increase in manufacturing costs from the previous estimate of 825. That was one year prior. The two funds affected would be assistance to firefighter grant 101 336 505 108 F 08163. And vehicle purchase would be the expenditure of 101 336 986 000 FOB 8163. And-
Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by Terrencey.
Yep.
Chief, did we cut you off?
No, it's fine.
You guys are just so excited that you're finally going to get it.
Any discussion from council?
How far out? Anticipation?
Soon as they get the check in the mail, we pick up a truck.
Really? That's fantastic.
I've had some intimate knowledge as far as the build process, and I know that both Chief Willsec and Captain Brian Alowski have put in countless hours into building the engine, specking it out, making the trips out, as well as putting in for the initial grant. And it's been a long time coming and I'm looking forward to it very much.
Plus the, uh, we were just out there inspecting it and the cost of the truck has increased nearly $80,000 and it's two years out to get one now.
Wow.
So it was a good purchase.
Good job. Thank you.
So.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Absolutely, yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Your next item, Chief.
Okay, the next item was, uh, the cost to add the light tower labor installation was approved in the 2024 budget session. This is a light tower that's added to the vehicle itself. Uh, it illuminates our scene, makes scene safety very good for firefighters. It's really nice and bright and we've helped out on police scenes a lot, lighting up their areas. So, um, appreciate the nod to go ahead with this. It was in the amount of $29,906 and, um, the account affected is the equipment purchases 101 336 981 000.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by Terrencey. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, my third item is we added rollout trays. We had these approved in the budget session also. Um, the amount of $2292. We added this equipment to the truck as it was at the, one of our inspections. Our hearse tools, we'd have to be reaching into the compartment itself, which could create back injuries for our firefighters. So pullout tray gets them right out to the road where we don't have to bend over to get them out. So, and we did that for all the other heavy equipment. So I'd like approval for this, uh, equipment purchase would be coming out of the ledger account 101 336 981 000.
So moved.
Support. Motion by Deanne, support by Ryan. Any discussion from council?
I, I can tell you, Mr. Mayor, that's going to be a great purchase. That, reaching in to grab an item like that at the weight, the, the cost that you're going to have with the fire, fire injured and workman's cop along, that's savings immediately right there.
That's why we adopted it in the budget.
Perfect.
Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Anything else to report today?
Um, report on our generator. We're still tied up with DTE. Um, I contacted, uh, I think it's Tyler, and, uh, they're still waiting for an answer from DTE on what has to be changed or not changed. So, thank you. Thank you for the approval of everything.
Thank you. And just so the public knows, uh, this is our first meeting since adopting the budget. So it looks like we're spending a ton of money. And we kind of are, but it's all been budgeted for. You know, it's, it's just the, the dam has broken now because we are officially, as of July 1st, in the new budget year. So the new fiscal year. So that's why it appears, boy, they're just spending like crazy. It's, it's all been budgeted. It's all been planned.
That's what makes me happy is no budget amendment required.
And no deficit spending.
Absolutely.
I have one more item, Mayor. Um, I'd like to pursue an avenue for getting rid of our engine three, the Mack Fire Truck. And, uh, I do have some stuff to talk with you about with, uh, being on an auction site. I think we're better off going to a private site. I think we can get more money for the vehicle. And I'd like to have approval to research that and possibly sell the truck. Um, I don't know if that's-
I think, I don't think you need approval to research it.
Okay.
And it's not formally on the agenda that, or in the packets. So I'd be glad to talk to you, and then maybe we can get that on next month's agenda for it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Kaluzny, report from fire, or police.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, in front of you is a agenda item summary, and actually I'm looking to bring money into the city and not spend it this month.
Thank goodness.
Uh, our, our current transition from our Chevy Tahos is, is complete. Um, one of the vehicles was actually transferred to City Hall for their use. In discussions with the city clerk, it, it was deemed that the vehicle wasn't going to get the proper use that it would. So it would be more prudent to sell the vehicle and recoup the money rather than kind of just let it sit there and really not, not get the use that it really needed. So what I'm looking is, I'm, I'm looking for approval to authorize myself the ability to sell our 2019 Ford Explorer patrol vehicle. Uh, last four of the VIN is, uh, 3679, and deposit all proceeds into our sale fixed assets. That's GL 101 301 693 triple zero.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by Sikora. Any discussion from council?
No.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Anything else to report? Anything else to report tonight, Chief?
Uh, yes, Mayor and Council, uh, late last week, um, I was contacted from Sheriff Folker Scham. He's looking to put together a countywide national night. So, so what this is, is it's a, it's a, got an annual night that they, they do where it builds community police and community relationships and stuff. So, um, multiple jurisdictions here in Macomb County are going to be bringing personnel, vehicles, you know, SWAT teams will be out. And it's a family friendly event. It's a free event for, for residents and stuff, and it's going to be held over Freedom Hill. Um, this is going to be the first year that we're going to actually have a, a vehicle from Utica. We're going to, we have, uh, two of our officers are going to go and myself's going to go down as well and interact with the public and, and kind of show off our nice new patrol car and try and see if we can solicit some, some young police officers to come join the ranks at, at some day. Um, I don't have the official date yet because like I said, I was just reached out. But in looking at previous events, it's done on the first Tuesday of August. So that would be August 6th. And the event generally is, is about five to nine. So, but once I get the official information from the sheriff's department, I'll go ahead and put that on our social media, give it to the mayor and put it on, on, on the city's side as well. But it's really great event for, for, uh, you know, young kids, families, and anybody just kind of come interact with, with police officers from different communities around.
Excellent. Sounds great.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Diamond, DPW.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have four items on the agenda. Uh, the first one is the acceptance of the Eagle TMF grant, which stands for the Community Technical, Managerial and Financial Grant. And that was, um, received through the help of HRC. Um, we wrote this, uh, grant and it's for the point inspections, um, either, uh, for engineering costs, for our actual costs of doing them, and then if we need to pursue options of having a contractor come in and do them. We are obviously doing them right now, but this gives us the opportunity to do more than just the ones that, uh, we have to do, uh, by October 16th. So, uh, we did, um, uh, obviously we were awarded the grant. It's a no, no match for $512,000, $512, $500. Um, and again, it's no match. And this includes all, um, work done starting October 1st of 2023, which covers all the work that we've done already so far. Um, so I'm looking for approval, um, to, for the state grant for the mayor to sign so we can, um, start working on this.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Terrencey. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Good job. Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Excuse me, Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Great job.
Thank you. And then, um, once the treasurer and I start working on the numbers of what, um, already was, because it pays for full salary and 40% of the, of the benefits as well. So once we get those numbers situated, we'll be back in August to make the amendments for last year's fiscal '24 and then moving forward for fiscal year '25. So thank you on that. Uh, the next item is for our, um, the emergency work that Shelby Underground did for us. Uh, it was exploratory and it was emergency at the time until we realized what it was. Um, so this is just for the, the work that they did. They did put in for the bid, but they were not low bid, so they didn't end up getting it. So this is just work that they did, um, already done. So, um-
And this was for the storm drain sinkhole on Hawn and Van Dyke.
Correct. So, and this, I'm looking for a motion to approve Shelby Underground invoice, um, 1,800 for $2,550 for services already rendered. And that will come out of the street storm sewers, 101 441 784 000.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by O'Donnell, support by Sikora. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much for that. My next one is now, it is a purchase. Brought in some money, now I'm going to purchase. Uh, this was, uh, budgeted for, um, our, a new commercial riding mower. We have been without it for the last three and a half weeks and I want to publicly say thank you to Dylan and Jimmy Johns. They've been allowing us to use their riding mower for the last three weeks to handle our, um, uh, city lots that we do in the parks. So we have a good relationship and luckily he was able to allow us to use it. We used it two days a week, um, for the last three weeks. Um, so I'm looking for, uh, it did go out for bid and, um, HellaBucks on, uh, mound in Warren came back with the, the low bid. Um, and we went out for X marks and they're, they're, um, they do a Toro commercial. So they're basically all this, you know, they're comparable. Uh, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the purchase of new riding lawnmower, which is Toro Commercial, 60 inch from HellaBucks for $11,111.33.
So moved.
Motion by Deanne.
Support.
Support by Terrencey. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell. Terrence.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you for that. Guys will be happy. Last one is for our 2024 concrete pavement repair and sidewalk program. We've been waiting on this one for a while. We did have it out on bid.net, and we did get three bids with the lowest one going to L. Anthony Construction. So this is for North Point Sidewalk, the road repair, and the Van Dyke Median project. So all three of those are involved. Funding from those come from three different sources. You have the sidewalk construction, street construction, and routine maintenance, and then also the MEDC grants and the RFB trans-in. So some of them are already paid for with the grants, the other is for our regular maintenance. So this one's a little bit longer. Motion to amend the fiscal year 2025 general fund street department and major street fund budgets as follows. Reserve fund balance transfer into MFAUTI 101 441 692 000, MFAUTI for $70,890. Street construction 101 441 971 300, MFAUTI to, for 78, $70,890. The other state grants MEDC 372 118 202 000 569 000 for $73,330. And sidewalk construction 202 449 976 200 372 118 for $73,330. And routine, routine maintenance, North Point 202 449 931 091 for $19,100. So moved.
Motion by O'Donnell.
Support.
Support by Sakura. So, yeah, just to clarify what this is, part of this was, is coming from a state enhancement grant we got several years ago, and that is gonna fill the sidewalk gap on North Point Boulevard from north, on Shaner, from North Point Boulevard to the Utica Shelby Township border.
Correct.
Where it just, the sidewalk just ends at our border, so we're gonna fill that gap. It also fills the gap on the south side of North Point Boulevard from Stonefield Village condo, basically, to Shaner. So this is grant money that we were awarded from the state. It's taken that long to get this all in the works, but it's very good news that it's gonna happen. This also includes the median on Van Dyke south of Hall Road, where we had a bunch of delineators that became target practice for people making illegal left-hand turns. So we're gonna have a curb and bigger, stronger delineators on top of a curb that you'd have to be pretty silly to drive over. That money is coming from the marijuana licensing application fees, and then some routine maintenance, just fixing some sections on North Point, that's coming out of, I think, police street funds, right?
Correct, correct. That we identified, and we've got some curbs that are falling apart there, too, so the money for that. So that's the, the money portions of things that needs to be approved first.
Any further discussion? Ma'am clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Terrence.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. And the second part of this?
And a motion for council to approve the 2024 concrete, concrete pavement repair and sidewalk program bid award to L. Anthony Construction in the amount of 1,600, 1,063, $163,316, contingent on the providing the required insurance and bonds in coordinates, in accordance with the contract.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Deanne, support by O'Donnell. Any discussion? Ma'am clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Terrence.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. I was at lunch when you guys, or I was at a meeting or something offsite when we opened those bids, and Madam Clerk texted me the thing, I'm like, and I didn't realize that was the whole number. I thought it was just one portion. Like, how are we gonna get this done, you know? And the good news was, I was shocked it was so low for all that work.
And, and so were we, and even HRC, they were figuring 250 to 300,000. So it's nice that bids came in lower for once, so, and they were all under that, so.
Yep, good news. Anything else to report, Mr. Diamond?
Unfortunately, I do, I'm sorry. First, we'll start with the Davis Lift Station. The pumps are actually in, we are just waiting on the panels to be assembled. Unfortunately, that's still three to four weeks out, so it's pushing us back a little bit further. Nothing that we can do to, to hurry these things, it's a supply issue, but moving forward, it is gonna happen, we're gonna have a nice new pump station. I will keep you posted, hopefully we'll see some action by next council meeting. The sewer rehab lining project will, all the televising and cleansing has been done. They plan on starting July 15th, pending on weather. They plan to be in and out three to four weeks, and they'll have those done. During the televising, we found a few that we could remove off the list that weren't as bad as what were first televised, and we are adding some other ones that we know need it. So it's all, it's all good stuff for us for, and, and that's gonna help us out tremendously, especially with, hopefully, our, our bills from Gleywell, because now we're not gonna be losing any water out of our, out of our sewers. So that works out well. I did have some seasonal help start, a couple UCS graduates, they are painting hydrants. This was from the budget sessions that was approved, so they're out painting hydrants, you might see them in your neighborhood, and they're also doing storm sewer drains. We have stencils saying that this, these lead to the river, but that gets us in compliance with our MS4 permitting. I'm in, uh, working with the My Deal reps right now for the boom truck that was approved during, through budget. I'm hoping to have that in front of council for next meeting. And I already thanked Dylan, but wanted to thank Dylan from Jimmy Johns again for helping us out with the lawnmower, that was great. And then if you noticed, weeding and mulch have been, been done around the city. We're hopefully, having that finished, we have the library, we have the firehouse, and a couple other small spots, and we'll be done with, with that. And then we'll move on to Grant Park to get our, the mulch for the play area. Slide parts are in, that should be up hopefully by the end of this week, if not next week. We do have it removed, the old piece, so we're just prepping it to get it in. Other than that, unless you have any questions, that's it for me.
Thank you. Yep, busy, busy. Doing a great job, too. I love the black mulch. We kind of went back and forth, you know, should we go black? Just go for it, Bill. I think it looks great.
It was cool.
Yeah. Nothing from the treasurer tonight? Ma'am clerk?
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. I don't have any items for you, I'd just like to update everyone that we're working on the absentee ballots this week, so you can be looking for those in the mail. We've gotten many, 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 many calls from residents that are confused by the extra mailing surging from all of the different parties that are trying to encourage people to vote, but it's confusing them because they're already registered to vote, and they're already absentee voters. So if you have any questions, continue to call the clerk's office, we don't mind, better be safe than sorry, but if you have voted in Utica, you are already registered to vote. So I just want to clear that up for people. And then there will be two locations to vote for early voting in Sterling Heights, one at, still at Dodge Park, which will happen the weekend of the Sterling Fest. So every, I, I encourage people to visit Sterling Fest and just go over and place your vote at, at the community center, and then also at the Caldean Community Center on 15 Mile Road, and that's all posted on our city website. So if you have an absentee ballot, you can take that and cast it during early voting, during, you know, those nine days of early voting. So that is all I have for you.
Public accuracy test, I think, is Thursday.
Oh, yes, Thursday, this Thursday at 10 o'clock. We are having our public accuracy test right here. Super fun. That's it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Parks and Rec, anything to report tonight?
I just want to invite people to our, we got lots of, lots of stuff going on in Utica, as the mayor said. So July 19th, we have our annual reptarium event, two, from 2:00 to 3:00. A little bit later this year, people complained that it was nap time, so we figured we'd go a little bit later, but always a fun time, that's one of my favorite events of the year. And then on Friday, August 2nd, we will have also our movie in the night, uh, movie in the park that night at dusk, so another fun event to have before, uh, what was the other thing that was going on the Saturday? There's a lot of things going on that weekend, it's gonna be a fun weekend, so come, just join us in Utica, and any day, or, or, all day, every day, you can have fun with us, too.
And I don't know if you said it, but both of those events are at Grant Park.
At Grant Park, yes, thank you.
The reptarium time start again was?
Two to 3:00.
Thank you.
Starts at 2:00. All right, thanks.
Thank you so much. Nothing from historic, Ms. McGrill?
Nothing from legal.
Nothing from you either. All right, I did not forget, at this time, we open up the floor again to the public to speak to council about any item at all, does not have to be on the agenda, everyone will have three minutes. If you could, just give us your name and address, please.
Shelley Brady and at 7546 River Vista. Um, I just wanted to know if there's anything happening with that condemned gas station on the corner of my street. It's just, it's awful. It really is awful. Is there anything we can do about that, or?
Is it okay to?
Well, it's public comment, this issue.
Yeah, I'm not really supposed to have a back and forth during public comments.
Okay, well, that's my comment. Can we do something about it?
In general, I'm just gonna make a statement. I know our code enforcement officer's been over there, we issued him a couple warnings last week. I went by, I think it was Sunday, and they had done, they had corrected all the things that we had told them they had to, you know, cutting the grass, cleaning up some of the garbage, but it is, it's a mess. Unfortunately, you know, city govern, we can't make property owners sell their property. I wish we could in some cases, but that's really not a government we-
Can we, can we, can we get them motivated to that, or?
It's a process, it's a process that we have to go through.
It is, but it's just really bad.
Agreed. It's probably the most blighted property in Utica right now.
And I know, I don't know if you guys will agree with this, but I have family that-
Can you go to the mic so they, it'll be picked up on the video?
I have had, I have family that have been in Utica forever, and it has been said so many times that the south end just doesn't get a lot of attention, because it is, it is slower than the rest of the area, but it just, that is just awful looking. So I just hope we can do something about it.
Thank you.
That's all.
And ma'am clerk, you did not run the clock.
I did, I did, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I did, then I restarted it.
Oh, yeah, okay, that's fine.
I was sorry.
No, it's not your fault. Anyone else from the public that would like to?
My name's Louis Myers, 45483 Kenning Street. First off, commend the fire chief to do what he did, the endeavor for FEMA. It's a tedious process to get that truck. I do want to make a correction on that eight or 60, $80,000 increase you mentioned, is called inflation, okay? I want to also add this comment, it's, I know it's water under the bridge. I'm gonna go back to a petition back in February agenda, revised the marijuana business ordinance. I'd like to share my thoughts about this meeting, and it's well overdue. My sincere compliments go to Ken for his courage to stand strong, hold his head up, decency, and share his common sense over opening up the current ordinance.